Good morning. It's 9:30 a.m., September 17th. It is national voter registration today, so if you haven't registered to vote, it's not too late to do so. All right, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. And we've got minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of the September 10th Commissioners' Meeting.
Second.
Moving to second, any changes? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
All right. Any public comment regarding pending resolutions? If not, go ahead. We do have a commendation presentation. This is a resolution honoring Officer Mary Gaylor for her swift action on March 24th, 2024, which resulted in the saving of life. Whereas it has come to the attention of the Board of Medina County Commissioners that Mary Gaylor, Corrections Officer of the Medina County Juvenile Detention Center, was responsible for saving a juvenile resident's life. At the time of this occurrence, Mary had been employed as a corrections officer for less than one year and has been trained in first aid and CPR. And whereas her history of training and her ability to act under extreme circumstances was confirmed at the Medina County Juvenile Detention Center during meal service on March 24th, 2024, when a resident eating dinner began choking and came to Mary's attention. Mary observed the juvenile choking and having a difficulty time breathing. Whereas Mary took immediate action, performing two abdominal thrusts on the juvenile, who was able to cough up the object blocking his airway. Mary's immediate actions resulted in the avoidance of a life-threatening situation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Medina County Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor Mary Gaylor for her outstanding dedication and service to the residents of Medina County and for her efforts and decisive actions which ultimately saved a life. Be it further resolved that the Board of County Commissioners hereby commends Mary Gaylor for her continued selfless service to our community and those who live here.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion?
Well done.
Yes, indeed. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Mary, you want to come forward? Like to present this?
Thank you so much.
Want to say a few words? You're welcome to.
I mean, just thank you. I mean, I'm just doing my job, and I'm glad that, you know, my training and what I do there makes a difference, and then I was able to help.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, now we'll get to our business at hand, resolutions. County Engineers' Office, Dan Becker.
Morning.
Good morning.
So we have, I've got four change order resolutions for your consideration. The first is approving change order number one on Metzger Road Bridge replacement number one project. The second is change order number one for the 2024 MC 3000 chip seal resurfacing project. The third change order is for the 2024 Thin Overlay Resurfacing Project. And the last one is approving change order for the 2024 422 Chip Seal Resurfacing Project. And then our weekly permits.
Move to approve the four resolutions.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, Sanitary Engineer, Jeremy Senko. Good morning.
Morning, everyone. Just one resolution for consideration today. That's declaring the necessity to rehabilitate existing sanitary sewer mains in various locations within Medina County and authorizing the sanitary engineer to commence advertising for construction bids.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Very good. Thanks, Jeremy. All right, Holly Muir and our Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have five new hires, three at County Home, two at Sanitary, one new hire correction in building, five rate increases, two in sanitary, one in maintenance, and two at office for older adults, and two leave of absence, one in sanitary and one in transit.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Holly. Brett Thomas, our Finance Director. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have seven resolutions for you today, not quite as short as last week, but our first one is expenditure adjustments for various funds. Our primary one there is a medical mutual claim that came out of the wrong account. Our second resolution is our print shop revenue line item in the total amount of $3,185.25. Our third resolution is accepting the fiscal year '24 Recovery Ohio subgrant between OCJS and the Medina County Drug Task Force. That will be an amount of $10,000. Our fourth resolution is the purchase of 6,700 gallons of regular gasoline for the engineering center. Port's petroleum came in again as our low bid at $1.92.3 per gallon. Our fifth resolution is expenses of the county engineer for the Superintendents and Mechanics' Conference in Mount Sterling, Ohio. Our sixth resolution is expenses of other county officials. OOA actually has a summit this time for northeast aging and disability. Our seventh and final resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $1,817,481.69.
Move to approve the seven resolutions.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion?
Do we know the last time our fuel cost was below $2 a gallon?
It was, actually, we had a little dip last year where it dropped down shortly after the summer, I believe. I can pull the historicals, but...
All right. I knew it'd been a while.
Well, it's good to see.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Springer, our County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have two resolutions for your consideration. The first one is to authorize a one-year extension for our lawn and snow plowing services. This would be with Greenskeepers. This would be, again, a 12-month period. There was a slight increase in the Consumer Price Index, which was built into the contract, so requesting approval on that. And then the second resolution is for the Clerk of Courts for their Brunswick Auto Title Office. As you recall, we went out for an RFP. We had to identify new space for relocation. So this would be authorizing a five-year lease agreement with two five-year extensions for a location at 2875 Center Road, Unit 2, in the city of Brunswick.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion?
Do we know when that'll be operational?
So we would have to move into, if approved, final negotiations, discussing with the broker. We do anticipate we can get something approved here quickly. It's 120 days for a full build-out. Currently, it's a shell, so it's a blank slate. So it gives us a lot of opportunities for a good layout in the future.
Now, this is that office complex, Trillium Creek. It's Sherman's Crossing. It's across from Antonio's Pizza.
It's a good location for the, all the car dealerships and stuff.
Yeah, I don't, they can just walk down the street, actually, on the sidewalk.
There's a state, there's a state review of that, too, once the build-out's done, or is that part and parcel?
Yeah, we would have to coordinate with the state on certain aspects of it, which Mr. Wadsworth has already begun some of those discussions. So they're aware of our plans to relocate. And again, it was a result of not being able to renew at our current location.
Yeah, yeah, apparently, they were seeking other entities to go there. And it wasn't because we didn't want to stay there, but to this point, they're, yeah, I think it's much more lucrative to expand the number of restaurants, apparently, in that area. I don't know. We'll see. All right. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Department updates. We've got Richard Nelson with us, Chief Building Official.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Building Department report for the month of August. Value of construction overall continues to be about 16% above last year. It's been running 16% above for several months. New home costs spiked up to $520,000 for the month of August. So I'm not sure what's going on there, but that, of course, raises the year-to-date average to 416,000. And it was also a pretty good month for homes. There were 35 new home starts in August, which is three or four above the average, above the five-year average. So that's pretty good. But moving on to the second page, even though value of construction remains 16% above, we ended up, our monthly receipts ended up down 15%. So I'm not sure what's going on there, but the two generally go hand in hand, but not exactly, not always. You know, because our permits are based on square footage. Square footage drives the price of projects, but it doesn't go, you know, exactly hand in hand. But then moving to the third page, our year-to-date receipts are about dead even with last year, which is also kind of interesting. Page four is permits issued by townships and villages in August. And again, page five is commercial permits issued by villages and townships. And the last page lists all the commercial projects and their values on permits that were issued in August. Other news, our review times remain real good. We're actually down to two days on residential review times.
Good job.
And commercials, around 18, some often less. Especially recently, there's less coming in. Seems like it's slowed down quite a bit. Other than that, our new electric slash building inspector, he's got a residential building inspector also. He started yesterday, and so we expect good things. And so we're pretty flush on inspection capabilities right now, and so I think we'll be in good shape.
Great.
Excellent.
I guess, no doubt, the home buildings continuing with some pace. I know we had, at the land bank yesterday branding, Gibson provided us with some data showing what the household incomes had to be for rentals as well as for home, and it's astounding, the numbers. And it's obviously concerning for the, I'll just say, the more affordable end and people getting squeezed out, but it's like, this is...
I know.
Very startling, this continuing. And I could see with the interest rates that they're starting to come down for the mortgage level. We're probably going to continue to see some of this. There's a high demand for families moving here.
Well, it's also interesting, when we look at these numbers, that the average, we'd go average home cost, right? So that's the total divided by the number of permits that were pulled is how we come up with that number.
Sure.
But you mentioned an important thing that I guess I've always understood but never really thought about. It's, your office operates based on the square foot, right? So the permitting fees and things like that are based on square footage?
Correct.
So it might be interesting, just as a trend line to follow, how, what it costs for each square foot of construction.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's...
Because as I saw that number jump way up, I thought, well, there must have been fewer permits, or the permits that were pulled were for higher-end houses.
Higher-end houses.
Higher-end houses.
Right. So, but over the course of a calendar year, that would probably wash out a little bit.
It does. Average is out, but, you know, you can, you have some, almost every year, we have two to three, 10,000 to 15,000-foot houses.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, 700,000 to a million.
But year over year, their impact on the numbers, if we were looking at it in terms of the total square footage of houses, would probably be less significant than just looking at it per permit.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, definitely.
It's just an interesting trend line to follow, because as we talk about affordable housing...
Indeed, indeed.
Are the smaller ones, by, you know, pound for pound, less expensive or not? And I just wouldn't know the answer to that without the data.
Right. Oh, yeah, indeed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You, too.
Great. And then Ben, now our EMA Director.
Morning. Here's a report for the past three months. So some of the highlights on our activities over the last few months.
Thanks.
The building construction's complete, which we were close to last meeting, but everything's moved in now. All the equipment is moved in, so we have hazmat equipment, structural collapse, and water rescue equipment in that new building. So we've started to host some of the trainings there, the teams go to every month. So it's really worked out good, having everything in one spot. And also, it's helped out just with response times, having them in one spot, same place we're working. It makes it easier than driving across the county to get into the equipment to go somewhere. The Medina County Fair, so that's always kind of a heavy lift for public safety in the county. Planning goes on year-round for the fair, monthly, and then the week of the fair, like half the public safety agencies in the county are involved, you know, in various ways. So we developed the incident action plan for every day. That's the plan that public safety follows. Each day, we have a morning briefing with everybody involved throughout the week of the fair. Dive training just started last week. That's been, another thing that's been that works here for a couple of years since we started the water rescue team a couple of years ago. We've had a swift water rescue team for the past couple of years, and now we're just starting the dive component. So remember, we got the $100,000 grant from the Hilliard Foundation to buy the equipment for that, and now the training has started last week. So that dive training will go on for eight weeks in the pool in Ripman. Then we'll take a little break, and then early spring, we'll continue on with the open water sessions, actually finish out the certifications. So the team should be operational then, pretty early next year. We're working with the Board of Elections on some election preparation activities, just with the concern, you know, all this stuff coming up, the November election, anything from, you know, white powder envelopes to protesters, all that type of stuff, how they would deal with that. So we've been meeting with them and working through their plans. The mitigation plan, I believe last time I mentioned we received a grant for the mitigation plan update. So we had the first planning meeting with the stakeholders on July 2nd, so that process has started. That'll go into next year realistically, before that plan's actually finished. Part of that's because it's grant-funded, and I'll get to the grants, you know, talking about the payroll and how that's kind of affected right now, but... And then the other interesting things, we're working with Liverpool Wastewater Treatment Plant to do a confined space exercise. So Dawn and Connor, they've been working throughout the summer with the wastewater treatment plant personnel on their confined space training, rescue capabilities in-house, things like using the tripod, what the procedures are, that type of stuff. So the culmination of that stuff they've been doing all summer is the confined space rescue team, we're having an actual exercise in mid-October with them. So we'll go from the very beginning, you know, something happens, call 911. Their plant personnel responds, the fire department responds, and we'll respond, kind of go through the whole exercise there, the Liverpool plant. We have a list of incidents. Year-to-date, we're at 37. So a couple of the interesting ones, there was a rope rescue in Granger. That was a horse that was sucked down in a ditch, needed lifted up. That was something a little different. In Seville, a couple of weeks ago, we had, there's some substantial damage in the very downtown area of Seville after that storm. I mean, it was pretty isolated, just, you know, kind of a few-block area, but there was a handful of structures that had trees and stuff on them down there. And then we responded to the county's central processing facility on Lake Road. There was a chemical reaction going on inside of one of the drums at the residential drop-off. So that drum was placed in an overpacked container, is what it's called, that we disposed of. As far as the grants, the capital grant, Nexus and Timsken Steel, all those together were for the building, so we've, you know, used up all those funds now, so those will come off the list. Homeland Security Grant is the radio tower project we're working on with the sheriff for the new radio tower in Seville. So we're working on an extension right now for that to go into next year. It's just taking a little longer than we expected to get the agreement with the Park District together, the bid specs and all that. The hazardous materials emergency planning grant, again, this was extended through June of next year now. So one of, kind of a good and bad problem we have right now is a lot of these grants include payroll on them. So being sure of people, we don't have the payroll to draw down on these grants. So like this one in particular, to do the actual planning, has $12,000 a payroll, which we don't have enough payroll right now to draw down on these grants. So the state extended that one for us. The training grant will be used up. That was for seven different hazardous materials, training classes throughout the summer. So the brick grant, what I mentioned with the mitigation plan, that's a $30,000 or $27,000 grant that covers payroll for the mitigation plan. Again, that was extend, or that goes through July 15th to 25, sorry. So we have some time to draw that one down, but we haven't drawn any more down on that while we've been short on personnel. Because the main one, the Emergency Management Performance Grants, the main one that we need to draw down, that's what funds all the EMAs across the state, basically. It's 50% of our payroll. So there's still $74,000 left on that. So the original date for that grant was the end of this year. They've extended that through March 31st to 25. So we should be able to draw it down by then, but that's the primary one we need to draw down first before we move on to the other ones, because that'll affect us in the future year if we don't draw it down. And we just received the Local Emergency Planning Committee grant. That's the annual grant that is a contract between LEPC and EMA to do all the LEPC-related hazmat activities. Any questions?
No, I'll just mention that the event over at the recycling center or transfer station will be, we'll be talking about that at our next Solid Waste Policy Committee. And likewise, as we update the Solid Waste Management Plan, we have to pay more attention to, I think, educating the public and about what they can and what they shouldn't put in their refuse, in the garbage. And the trouble is, is there's, when we look at the waste characterization, there's more and more hazardous materials, you know, the ion batteries and lithium ion, chemicals and so forth. We just need to be much more insistent on people that there is a proper way to dispose of them, and it's not in your dumpster in the front of your, in front of your house, because when it goes there, you end up with issues like that.
And then there was a trash fire like a week or two later.
Yes, exactly right. So I think, so we have to, there's more and more of these events going on. So there's no doubt that we're going to have to be much more affirmative in educating the public, as well as providing them opportunities for the appropriate disposal. And I think we'll be dealing with that, so, but, see, that's part of the prevention part, so we don't, so they don't end up showing up in your report.
Right. One other thing, too, or actually, two other things. We, I think, I mentioned this at the last EMA Board meeting, but I, you haven't been here since, but you talked about the fair, and we sat in on the first day of the fair board with their fair board meeting at lunch, and they had had some fairly significant radio challenges.
Yes.
And your office and the sheriff's office, I know, stepped up, and they had a lot of good things to say about your involvement and just in making sure they had the communication they need to pull off an event like that. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that. And then second, this will be, come up at tomorrow's EMA meeting, so this is news to you, but we're working on getting a date scheduled for the annual meeting for the townships, yeah, for the Advisory Board. We're looking right now at the, January is an interesting month, because it has five Wednesdays and five Thursdays, so we're going to look at maybe doing it the fifth Wednesday, because we figure that'll minimize other conflicts with other operations. So we'll, we'll kind of kick that around at the board meeting tomorrow, but that's our meeting that we need to have pursuant to the, to the joint agreement between the subdivisions. And we held it last year before the end of the year, because it was our initial organizational meeting, but the next one needs to be held sometime in January. So that'll be coming up, and I just wanted to make sure that was on your radar, too.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Great.
Are we good with the board members doing it after the January board meeting, then, or?
That would, I think that's okay, because I think the, we'll have to double-check, but I think the action we took said that they were, they weren't exactly appointed for a year. They were appointed until...
Until such time as the next organization.
Yeah, until the next organizational meeting.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners' Resolution. We have a resolution approving the petition for the regular annexation of 22.0536 acres of land known as being part of Brunswick Hills Township to the city of Brunswick, Medina County, Ohio. I'm not going to obviously read through that, but it gives all our detail list as to the evidence and the information that we evaluated and the conclusions we reached, as well as the decision to approve the annexation. And of course, upon that is the length of time it takes to journalize it.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Resolution, reappointing and appointing members to the Medina County Advisory Council on Aging and Disability. Ms. Boggs and Ms. Fagan, Sue Boggs and Jeanette Fagan have expressed an interest in continuing to serve. It's come to the attention of Commissioners that there is a vacancy for the Township Association to member number five. John, I hope I don't mess this up, Vujovic, expressed an interest in serving the Township Trustees Association number five. So this appoints Sue Boggs, Jeanette Fagan, as well as larger members, and then John Vujovic as representing the Township Trustees Association.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Reappointing Representative to the Medina County Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging. This is to, for Ashley Sorgen on the agency board. It will expire 7/20, and this reappoints Ashley Sorgen to that Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
This appoints Architect Charles Klinkenberg to the Medina County Board of Ruling Appeals for a term ending September 17, 2029.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion?
I know that's been an opening for a while, so I'm glad they have somebody who's interested.
Yeah. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. And I just want to thank him for his willingness to serve, let you point out. Next, we have a resolution for consideration supporting Medina County Park District's application efforts to secure funding through the Clean Ohio Green Space Conservation Fund to purchase and permanently protect the Yellow Creek headwaters, preserve property in Granger Township, Medina County. I'm going to request that we, if it's all right, we can discuss this. I would like to hold off. I know that the grants are due the 27th, so we have till next Tuesday to actually take action on this. But if it's all right with you, we can go ahead and proceed and include this in our discussion.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Do you want me to take it to the end of that, or you want to discuss it now? What's your, what's your pleasure?
The next thing is the discussion.
Will it come up?
Go ahead.
So it's next Tuesday? Will that be cutting it too close, or would we?
No, it's just a letter. It's a resolution. You submit, you'll be sent in a grant by that Friday, so we meet on Tuesday. And it, they come to here, our office. So Brian Gallatin puts them in. That's right, he's our power user. You submit, you'll be sent in a grant by that, that Friday, so we meet on Tuesday. And it, and it, they come to here, our office. So Brian Gallatin puts them in. That's right, he's, he's our power user. So I think we're close enough to the, well, the entities that need to take action to be able to make sure that gets included. So with that, while, if it's all right, we'll go ahead and discuss that. Nate, did you want to come and talk about this?
Sure.
Okay, please.
Morning, Commissioners. And Rhonda, thank you for getting this on the agenda so quickly. I reached out late Friday, and I appreciate that. We're talking about a ninety-seven acre project. It's part of a larger parcel, one single parcel that's a hundred and ninety-four acres. We have been interested in this property since twenty-nineteen. I looked back, and that's when I first expressed some interest in the property. It would preserve the headwaters of the Yellow Creek, which is one of the cleanest tributaries to the Cuyahoga River. So there's an impact there really in three counties, Medina, Summit, and, and Cuyahoga County. Medina County Park District would contribute some funding to this project, so in the ninety-seven acres, we could withhold roughly ten acres without any deed restrictions for recreational purposes. My board will be asked to authorize that expenditure tomorrow, and I intend to communicate with the Township Trustees in Granger today via letter. I know in previous requests this year, namely with Western Reserve Land Conservancy, there was a question about the tax implications. I went ahead and looked at the, the larger parcel, a hundred and ninety-seven acres. It's a brand-new parcel that was created in December of last year. So it is a new parcel, not active until the twenty-four tax year, payable in twenty-five. So the information is limited, but to the immediate west is a hundred and eighty-one acre parcel that's also in CAUV, so it's, it's comparable. That parcel to the west, taxes due in twenty-twenty-four, two thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. Seventy-three point three percent goes to Highland Schools. That's nineteen hundred dollars, sorry, one thousand nine hundred and five dollars and fifty-two cents. Seven point eight percent to Granger Township, that's two hundred and two dollars and seventy-seven cents, one point five percent to the library, thirty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. So if we're talking about ninety-seven acres versus the, compared to the hundred and eighty-one, you could roughly cut those in half. So there is a, a reduction in taxes collected, but the preservation of green space with anticipated recreation in, in a number of years is a, is a great benefit as we see it at the park district.
So I, I took the, since we removed this very quickly, we didn't have time. Normally, we've been trying to have a planning department review them, and so I took the, and I think Denise was able to identify for us the zoning that's around that area, to understand what that, as well as I took the liberty of also forwarding the development, the Menards Development that are, that is occurring to the south of that. And I know in that you may have made a comment, that's why I wanted to share with my colleagues, about that interest in, in, in that. I remember specifically when I attended that meeting with the residents, there were, I think, a number of us board members actually advocated to the owners that they would continue to work, hopefully work with the, in the preservation of that property, that rightfully shouldn't be developed, but should be, should be protected. And I think that's why I wanted to share with my colleagues, make sure we had in, that information in there, that it actually is, is a benefit regardless of the, I mean, the tax consequences are very minor in terms of, and it really has, even though it doesn't have any much potential for development, it's actually as much more of a public benefit as protection, at least based upon the comments. But I wanted to make sure that the adjoining property was not unduly impacted by, by this. And I, that's what I think we were trying to proceed with at least a little bit of time, make sure that we do have the full commentary.
Right.
And I was unaware on your proposal that you were also talking about carving out ten acres for the active recreation whenever the application comes through?
Right. So as Mr. Hambley's aware, there are some activities that Clean Ohio, I'll say, doesn't like. They don't like playgrounds, they don't like ball fields. We would like the ability to have some flexibility when it comes to developing public access. So we intend to withhold ten acres worth in, at the cost per acre, so we could build more of a, a park instead of a nature preserve in this location.
You know, I, I think it has to do with the nature of the grant. It was passed as that, and that program is Clean Ohio is for open space, open space conservation. Passive recreation is all right, but you can't have active recreation. And I know that's because the state of Ohio has funding for active recreation. It may not be sufficient for most people's desires and, and wants and the overall, but that's the balance. So there has to be a permanent conservation investment placed on that remaining portion of that. But you're saying you'll carve that out as part of the proposal?
Correct.
When you submit it?
Right.
Okay, that's good.
Something else just to note that, that I think as a county, we should all be very proud of. Next year will be the twenty-fifth year of the Clean Ohio Program. So from two thousand to twenty-twenty-four, the first twenty-four years of Clean Ohio, the Green Space Conservation Program, Medina County Park District has leveraged our local dollars, working with local landowners, to bring in twelve point three million dollars in Clean Ohio funding to preserve what people love about Medina County. And I think that really speaks highly to what, what the people want, what commissioners have supported, and what the, the park district's doing through, you know, certainly help with, with some of the landowners out there. Often, they're, they're giving us, if they're not donating land, they're giving us the gift of time. These things often take two to three years to put together, and, and often that's just as valuable to us.
All right. So now, the parcel was created Medina Line, was it Medina Line LLC?
It's County Line Land.
County Line, yes.
Limited.
Yeah, County Line Limited, yeah, sorry. So that was created specifically, is it the same owners as the property?
It's my understanding that the owners of County Line Limited, County Line Land Limited were partial owners of the, the larger parcel, or parcels that were sold off to Menards.
Got it, got it. Okay, so was it part of the original?
Correct.
Obviously, with the, with the intent of preserving it. And of course, that lessens the impact of the neighborhood to the north.
Sure. Yep, this'd be a great buffer between the, the commercial development and homeowners, certainly protecting resources. And, you know, one of the things we get a lot of questions about are ball fields, requests for more soccer fields, baseball, even youth football, lacrosse. This could be an opportunity for us to plan and offer some of those amenities in a, in a great location.
But the, yeah, the entrance on that would be on Medina Line, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So are we, I just, are we awaiting some additional information between now and next week, or is there any reason we?
Well, I just want to make sure we have everything we need for that. I know Denise, she was able to do a real quick one over, over. If we have other questions, I know Brandon, also, I asked Bethany to take a look and see if there's any, take a look at that, make sure we know of known impacts.
In terms of zoning, are there?
Yeah, our only question would be, what is the impact to the rest of the hundred acres that's on that site?
So the remaining, so it's a hundred and ninety-four acres, there'd be ninety-seven, ninety-seven acres retained by the owners. The plan is to acquire the entire parcel over two or three years. So it would become part of a larger park, but because of the funding that's available in Clean Ohio now, we would go after it in, in two chunks essentially.
So we, do we need this resolution and a letter, or is just this resolution?
Well, the resolution takes the place of that. I think, well, that's why I sent you a copy of the ORC. Basically, since the, rather than, if it was a land conservancy, would be a public entity to do it, township. In this case, it's the park district, it just needs a support or a resolution. Either one would suffice.
So this would suffice.
And basically, the law just says you have to inform us.
Mm-hmm.
So back to Aaron's question, do we need more information, or?
What, what, I had one question, I'm sorry. What portion of the parcel are you, how are you dividing it, first phase one and phase two?
Great question. So if you took a, a ruler east to west, it's basically, we're cutting it in half. So the southern portion, southern ninety-seven acres would be part of this first phase, the northern ninety-seven would be part of the second take.
And the second take would be, the intent was Clean Ohio or to make that active recreation?
The second take would be either Clean Ohio, maybe H-two Ohio funding to protect some of those wetlands and the woods that are there. The ten acre carve-out, if you will, would be for the active rec space, because with Clean Ohio, we could build parking lots and restrooms and those amenities. But we do want to have the flexibility for, as I said, ball fields, play areas, those sorts of things.
So you, and you'll be, as you said, you'll be meeting with the Township Trustees as well?
I intend to, well, the Township Trustees, their next meeting is after the grant deadline.
Right, right.
So I have to notify them, and I intend to do so today via letter.
Got it.
And then my board meeting is tomorrow.
Okay. And of course, by the time we review it, they will have had the opportunity to, to review it, and if they have any questions, can weigh in with the NRAP process. Because whenever, we don't review these until third week of October, I can't remember the date.
That's right.
Yeah, and so that would give them enough time if they had a concern that they wanted to raise in the scoring, or the, that could be resolved by then, so they could have the opportunity. So I'm, I'm okay at this point then, with now that you're able to answer a lot of the questions and so forth, a better understanding, so I'll.
So I guess then I'd move to approve the resolution and support.
Second.
Move to second. Any further discussion?
Good discussion.
Yes, thank you for coming in for this. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Roll, roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. Thanks, Nate. And next, we will open for public discussion. Anything? No? Okay, Stan, I mean, you're the public here, so, okay, so was the press. All right, good, we'll just move into our regular discussion session. Denise, you have anything else? Anybody else? Colleen?
I have nothing. Denise is still gathering questions and information on our, our queue that's out there, so hopefully we get some good proposals.
Okay, good.
And the Gazette covered it, and I obviously kept you both updated as well, but NOAAAC did approve the study for the Brunswick-Strongsville I-seventy-one corridor. And I am going to, so I've been working on a letter of support for the repeal efforts, which should be done at some point this week. And then I'm also going to circulate that to the other board members of NOAAAC, because as I mentioned at the meeting last Friday, NOAAAC has taken a position. They've actually passed a resolution supporting the repeal. And even though they're pursuing the study as, as indicated, you know, it would be nice if some of those other board members and some of the other municipalities could, could contact their representatives, like we're contacting ours, to say, look, even though the study's happening, and ODOT and NOAAAC are kind of taking their rightful position in this, that we'd still like to see House Representatives act, even if it's in lame duck session for, on House Bill two-seventy-six for the repeal. So in addition to sending that to our representatives, I was going to send it kind of as a template for other, for other NOAAAC board members to adopt if they see fit and circulate among their, their members of the General Assembly. So just wanted to keep you both posted on that.
All right, good, good. Is that it?
That's all for me.
Okay. And I wanted to bring up, I put in the packet, this is a, a draft proposal involving a, an initiative for evaluating the economic impact of home building in Medina County compared to a report on costs to revenue for local governments. As we heard today, we've had a little bit of home building, two-hundred-and-sixty-four homes in the townships, just over within our just circs and Wadsworth and so forth, and that doesn't include, of course, Medina or Brunswick. And there's a cost associated with that. And so every house that comes in, you know, anecdotally, or even the, the national statistics have indicated that there's more cost to services than the revenues that are generated to the local, local jurisdictions for the services provided, public services, roadways, and so forth. And I know the Farmland Trust back in the, about almost twenty years ago, and they keep using this national statistic, like for every house that gets built, it's a dollar and a quarter in services for every dollar that gets generated. You know, that's been used for some time by the farm, farmlands and so forth, because from their perspective, they're obviously, they pay more in taxes than the services they demand, and I think that, that's, that's correct. There have been a number of studies that have been done by, and which I shared with you, the National Association of Home Builders, where they've started to compare the costs of revenue for local governments based on different type of housing types, Molly families, senior, and you go down the list, single family, large lot, small lot, and so forth. The idea is to look at some local data, bring in a consultant, create a task force and study group to evaluate, and kind of looking at the local data and enlightened, or at least informed, the local officials as we get these new homes, that they understand what the costs are. If we look at the way that, and we're not talking about changing zoning, we're talking about under current zoning, what does our future community look like with all these homes? How much is it going to cost us to, cost the local governments, the county government, to provide the services necessary for that? So this is meant to put some local numbers, county numbers, understand the different task structures, but also have an understanding is the decisions we're making regarding land use and zoning are going to have impacts on our wallets and drive in, in the future. So the idea is to, is to put this together under the Planning Department, the Planning Commission leadership. Involved would be obviously the Economic Development Corporation, the Township Association, the Land Bank would be a partner to this, as well as, you know, Emergency Management and the Housing Network, OSU Extension. We'll be looking from their IMPLAN, which is that input-output tool that they've used to demonstrate when you have development, the, as a, as a generator, but there seems to be some other studies that have been done that we could use as templates, but understand how that, how that really factors in when it comes to the local. And so I'd like to propose that we go ahead and allow Denise to propose, go ahead and pursue creating this. We'd be going for an RFP. We would be seeking some private sector funding for this that would be basically a help through the Land Bank and as we work with developers, but the idea is the developers are not the ones leading this. This is a public sector initiative. This is one that involves public input, public sector, public sector, I'll just say, goals and mission, to understand that as the private sector and as we, we actually get more and more government money from the state level to create more housing, it has a cost on implications. It has costs, and we just have to understand what that. And I think this makes for good planning, planning decisions. Better information helps us make better decisions. So I hope, you know, take a look at that, I'd like your support. I think I, we'll, we'll have a proposal in the future, once we determine what the costs are, what the, what our, I guess I'm asking the Commissioners to, to donate, but we'll likewise, at that point also, and the private sector, see what we can do. But they're not the ones steering this. This will be under the Planning Commission, the Planning Department, as well as the public officials and other stakeholders that are part of this. Obviously, the private sector's going to be involved there in terms of information and insight, and, and, but they, they also have an interest. And I think it will make for better decisions as we continue to move forward in our communities as we're building out.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a great idea and something worth pursuing for a changing community, as we've seen. And even recently, in, in this room, we've seen some of these issues at the township level kind of boil over a little bit, you know? I mean, I think everybody kind of ends up in the right place, but some of this data would be very helpful when we have some of those discussions. That the outline in the introduction references multifamily structures, rental apartments, and affordable single-family homes for the workforce. This would include an assisted living facility or something like that, because that was one of the specific points you mentioned.
Exactly, yep.
Kind of the agriculture world, even with the reduced tax rates applicable to CAUV, you know, pound for pound, your, your typical farmland isn't requiring the same level of services as higher-density offerings.
Yeah, yeah.
And we know that, you know, developers and, and, and people who are trying to help be partners in solving the affordable housing issues are always pushing for, you know, higher density, but we also want to make sure that we can, can keep our, our townships informed, and, and really any of those decision-makers informed with what the, what the costs associated, the actual costs associated with that are, because I think in the absence of the data, everybody just has, makes certain assumptions that may or may not be factual. So I think this is a great step forward to kind of bridge, bridge some of those gaps. I, I still think those density discussions are, are, they will still be the important, the significant role that the townships will play in those discussions, but if we can help by, by bringing some reliable, I think, unbiased data into the mix, I think that's a great, a great role for us to play.
Well, I think too, it's just not about density, it's also the type of housing within that density.
Yep.
As, as to what the costs are. We know that some, you could have the same density but have higher costs, given the nature of what that housing is.
Right.
Does it have a high number of children, does it have a high number of individuals that require public services, whether they be EMS services or anything else? And one of the amazing things, yesterday, you know, their Land Bank meeting, we had a presentation from a developer manufactured home project over in, it's kind of a redo of a dilapidated trailer park, but there, her number one, she was saying, the number one inquiry of the people that are building in there are for seniors. She was focused on workforce housing, but overall, it hasn't been almost exclusively seniors downsizing, looking for more affordable options. To me, that just demonstrates we are squeezing our seniors out, and they are looking for more affordable options, and the private sector has yet has been taxed with trying to find a, a good way to be able to provide that kind of housing that makes some sense, where they actually own the structure, but it's downsized. And so I think there's a lot of that will come part of this discussion, knowing that we've got opportunities as we see more home building, that it's not, that the seniors that are downsizing are not downsizing to five-hundred-thousand-dollar homes.
Right. Yeah.
That are being built.
Smaller and the same price. And to your point on that, I mean, I think this is your point, is that the density question factors into that.
Yeah.
But so does the, so does the manufacturing process, and that's where, looking, having a conversation with somebody who's doing, you know, more manufactured homes, which are typically, you know, seen as, there are certain stigma that go along with those, but those can be, when we look at kind of what we were talking about with our Building Department earlier today, if you look at square, you know, pound for pound, what it costs to build a square foot of that home versus a square foot of a traditionally built on, onsite-built home, it, it looks a lot more appealing to keep the costs low, which it, it looks a lot more appealing to keep the costs low, which is ultimately, you know, if we, if we designate resources and land and all these other properties for affordable housing, and the entry point is still three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and up, I don't know that we've done what we really set out to accomplish. So I think we've, we've got to keep our eye on the, the end result, as well as the, kind of the preliminary goals.
If we build out the way it's, it's zoned, we know what the costs, I mean, there's, there, you could estimate what the costs are going to be. And I think being enlightened as what that is, might encourage people to take a look and say, well, if it's just based on, on zoning density, that's kind of a false presumption. Especially given that when you have planned unit developments and so forth, there are some flexible, there are some options the local communities have. And maybe more refinement would help assist to meet the needs of our growing population. The downsizing, the, the new, I'll just say, the new homeowners that are looking for an affordable house that are just starting off, like many of us did. We didn't come into that big house we have now. We kind of grew into it and kind of moved several times to do it, some people do. But it's, we have to make sure we have the housing stock available. And I think obviously the public sector needs to be part of that discussion, since they're the ones setting the rules. Did you, did you want to talk, Stan?
Just a comment.
Did, you want to come forward here?
I don't really care.
Oh, okay.
It's a comment.
Oh, sure.
If I could. Just in relation to Rick's report.
Right.
I just give you a couple of examples. If you go up to Valley City, and I encourage you sometime to go drive through some of these new subdivisions. I finished three new subdivisions up there in the last five years, all with the same developer. Drees Homes is building all of the homes. They start at five hundred thousand. So that's where you're five hundred to seven hundred and fifty to a billion one, and those subdivisions. If you go to Seville, where Ryan is building, I would encourage you to drive through the main subdivision. There, you're at two fifty as a point. Or two hundred in the ranches that are cluster homes, where they've built ten to one to an individual builder. I mean, they built sixty-five in a year and a half, clustered homes, targeted for seniors. Who's there? First-time buyers, did something they could afford.
Really, yeah.
So it's the same kind of thing.
Yep.
And then get in, on Meadows in Seville, where a cluster home was a hundred and sixty-five thousand, and we started in two thousand sixteen, it's now three hundred thousand. Half of a duplex, three hundred to ten, three hundred and ten thousand dollars. But that's where the biggest disparity is.
Sure.
Further north, big, big price. And then Motville also. I did the Hastings Tree Farm, the sale and the zoning, and there Drees is building. So there, you're on the higher end again. For a second comment, I'm working, working with the city of Medina right now about their hotel tax. And I just want you to know, their law director didn't know there was a convention and visitor bureau. He modeled their, their levy of three percent after Brunswick and Wadsworth. All of their money's been going into their general fund. It says right in that statute, in the opinion that I gave you probably four months ago, fifty percent of that is supposed to be coming to a convention and visitor bureau from each of those cities or their own convention and. It says you can have multiple convention and visitor bureaus. So you could have one for the county, the city's can create it. Like in Summit County, there's, Akron has one, the county has, in Stark County, Canton has one. In Holmes County, there's three of them, because the different cities have different tracks. So I just want you to know, now, I brought this up because I was in Paris when I read it in the newspaper, because I was in London and Paris a few weeks ago. And I immediately made contact with Greg Huber, who didn't know there was a convention and visitor bureau at all. So they're rewriting it now, because, and I said, please research it all. Maybe there's exceptions I don't know about. I supposedly retired in two thousand twenty-one, that opinion was from them. But, you know, I'm trying to see that money gets directed where the purpose was, not just simply to go into somebody's job.
And we're, we're reviewing that, I've had some conversations, we're taking a look. We are.
Hoping and praying you are, because I'm looking at, if this is true, and every one of those entities has been doing that, I'm looking at, is there a way to go back thirty-two years and get them to give up half of that money?
I'm not sure that, that's practical.
No, I don't know either.
But at this point, we're, we're, we are reviewing it, we are reviewing it. I know we have some discussions we have to pen with the auditor who collects all this, so I've.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, sure. All right. And, and obviously, the, I think we know very significantly, there's a high demand out there for people wanting to live here. And when you look at the report of all our, how great our schools are in, in this county, all basically, you know, four, four-star, four and a half, five stars. There's, there's a good reason people want to live here. But that is, the supply of housing is, that's why the prices are so high in a lot of ways. So I think obviously, this is something we have to understand, what does that mean as we build? And encourage more home building. We want to make sure we're going to be able to cover our costs and not have significant tax increases, get surprised in the next decade or two, because we have a lot more than we thought we were going to have. So anyway, so any, I don't have anything else to add at this point, all right?
Are you ready for me?
Sure.
To move to have an executive session to consider the compensation of a public employee.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. Thank you very much, and then we'll be ending for today. Everybody have a good week and enjoy the nice weather.